Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is five o'clock, it is February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. So I'd like to welcome everybody in person and who might be joining via Zoom to our meeting today. If you would all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and now if you will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to welcome everybody. I lost my agenda, excuse me, there it is. Madam Clerk, if you would please do a roll call, board members?
Yes. Mrs. Cooper. Mrs. Dooley.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Present.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Richardson.
Here.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, welcome everybody, and I will now ask for a motion, I'm sorry, for approval of our proposed agenda.
A move that we approve the proposed agenda.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you. And now we will ask that Ms. Dooley read her little statement and disclosure, please.
Hi, Emily Dooley declare that I have a personal interest in a transaction of the Charlottesville City Public Schools for the reasons set forth below, but I believe I may participate in the deliberation and voting on the transaction as permitted by Virginia Code Sections two point two dash three one one two B one and two point two dash three one one five H. Specifically, one, the transaction in which I intend to participate is deliberation regarding and vote on the Charlottesville City School Board's operating budget for the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, which includes pay to my spouse. Two, my personal interest in the transaction stems from my husband's employment by the Charlottesville City School Board as a social science teacher at Beaufort Middle School. Three, by way of my association with my husband, I am a member of a group of three or more, all employees of the school board, the members of which are affected by the budget deliberations and approval. And four, I am able to participate in the budget deliberations and vote fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. It is my intention to orally disclose the existence of this interest during each meeting of the Charlottesville City School Board at which the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five operating budget is discussed and ask that each such disclosure be recorded in the respective meeting minutes. A disclosure was filed on February twenty second, two thousand and twenty three and will be reflected in the public records of the clerk of the school board for five years.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. Now we will move on to comments from members of the community. If anybody here in the media center would like to step forward and make comment, you may do so at the podium. Please state your full name, your address, and you're limited to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jill McKinley. I'm here today as a parent and a co-chair of the Johnson Elementary PTO. Our board sent a letter earlier this week, and I just wanted to reiterate some key points. We have reviewed the budget proposal and are concerned about the significant gap between the requested funding and what has been allocated. This shortfall puts critical initiatives at risk, particularly those aimed at addressing the needs of our students. For instance, the need for reading and math specialists, increased support for special education, funding for school-based substitutes and resources to aid our English learning population are all in jeopardy. The Johnson community has sixty English learning students right now, and that's just growing as the years go by. Furthermore, we continue to recover from pandemic-related learning loss. It's crucial that we provide ample support to our most vulnerable students. The budget proposal directly addresses these concerns and represents a crucial step towards rectifying this ongoing emergency. We urge the school board to prioritize fully funding the original needs-focused budget request. Our children deserve every opportunity to succeed, and investing in their education is investing in our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the media center? If you're interested in making a statement, come to the podium, and then we will look quickly online. And if anybody online would like to make public comment, if you will, raise your hand, do the raise hand icon. Great, okay. We will move on. And now we do have an opportunity on our agenda for students, any students who are interested in making public comment. Great, thank you, and if not, I will turn it over to Dr. Gurley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and our community members, stakeholders assembled. This evening, I will bring before you the proposed budget for the it was this computer. I'm bringing forth the budget for the twenty five school year, next slide. Here we have outlined what will be covered in this evening's presentation. And do want to just recognize that what I will be presenting this evening is a modified version of our, of the original presentation from earlier in the year. We've had public comment and feedback to the school board. And with those directives, we have continued to move forward with a needs-based budget that is higher than what was previously presented in the budget work sessions. Next slide. This is just the slide, just to reiterate that we are required by statute to bring forth the budget for the new fiscal year. Next slide. Again, we've shown this slide a couple of times, but just want to reiterate that our budget is focused on student achievement, safety and security, compensation and benefits, the modernization of buildings, and K-Tech. And these things are all aligned with our strategic plan. Next slide. So this is the budget changes document that we've typically shown at the end of our presentations, our initial, our initial presentation, and we've also included this at the end of each one of the work sessions. So this document is different. This budget is different, as I said a few moments ago, than our budget from January the eighteenth. What you will see in this budget, in this budget that we're presenting forward is that we did remove the average of three percent increase for the teachers, administration, and the general support staff. This budget includes a step increase for our teachers. And we've had a lot of conversations over the course of the week and while we prioritize this versus the one percent bonus, because this goes towards creditable compensation. And so that's why we did the step increase. We also included in this budget the administration and general support staff aligning, aligning those pay tables using the Evergreen Plan. So this, this budget does include that. This budget also includes, reflects a decrease. It reflects a decrease in what we originally had for health insurance. You will now see that we are reflecting that there's only a three percent increase in the health insurance versus what we previously had. And we also did get the, some firm numbers from transportation from the city as it relates to our contracts. And so with regards to transportation, we did have a decrease of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We had a number that was about nine, nine hundred and, nine and a quarter. It's about nine seventy-five, it was nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we did see a decrease. We did during this process, last week, we did receive some feedback from the city. So we do have some firm, firmer numbers. This number from the city's transportation does take into consideration their new collective bargaining agreement. And if you all have any questions, feel free to ask those questions as I go along. Yes, Ms. Torres?
Specific to the people transportation, I realize it's a little early in the process, but my understanding is that the city, that they're going to kind of phase that increase in. So this, this increase that's reflected right here is just for this current year for, is that, do we know, is that it's just salaries or, or is it equipment, what?
This will, so this takes into consideration all the work that they did with staff for collective bargaining. So it does take into consideration the staff, the increases to their salaries that they will have over the course of the rest of this. Well, for us, a fiscal year starts in January one, so from January one to the end of the year and through the end of our next calendar, through our calendar year, I should say. Yes, yeah, Ms. Powell, can this, she can speak to the changes in the transportation agreement.
So there aren't any substantial changes to the service level. We did work it out to get two additional thirty-hour driver positions because part of the new arrangement is there are ten forty-hour driving positions, and then there were ten thirty-hour driving positions. So we did get two additional drivers added. Originally, the nine seventy-five included a recommendation for six additional drivers to help ensure that all the field trip demands can be met and to assist with special needs transportation. So we didn't, we're not moving forward with six, we're moving forward with two. Another piece that was removed was additional vans and handicap-accessible wheelchair vans. That was in the mix, we may still try to procure one of those, but I believe the van purchases were removed. There's still money in there for the normal bus recurring replacements. So everything as far as the service level and equipment is basically the same, which does still maintain some funding for replacement cycle on buses. The only thing that changed really was, that was outside of the agreement, if you will, because there's like a fifty cent, fifty cent differential now for the S endorsement, which is something we've been looking for for some time to the student, to be able to drive a school bus. It's an additional endorsement above all else on a CDL. And we've felt for some time that needed to be recognized, and so that did come through in the agreement. And then two additional drivers for this, as far as service level changes.
So what is the compensation increase for the bus drivers?
I don't want to speak to that because I don't have it, it's, you know, it goes in phases, as Ms. Torres alluded to. And so what you can do when something's implemented mid-year like that, the city finance team is able to average that out over the year and arrive at the number. And, but to Dr. Gurley's point, what you see as far as an increase does not encompass the whole agreement as it runs out over, you know, multiple years, I believe it's a three-year agreement. What this increase represents is just the increase in the impact of that for next fiscal year.
Any other questions on this slide before we move to the next one?
Can I just ask, relative to the, our competing surrounding counties where our two percent, I know that mid-year raise was, that's, we're paying ourselves back for that in this budget?
Right, that was, that was not budgeted in this current fiscal year.
Okay. And then I guess for the step increase, like, are we staying competitive with other jurisdictions?
So I think ACPS just released theirs yesterday.
I think they're meeting right now, right, to get Dr. Hauss's.
And there, in the packet that they've uploaded, I believe, their initial is a three percent increase. So I think we're going to see a lot of that. Right now, there are two iterations in the House and the Senate's budget with regards to a three percent increase, which will be required for SOP, SOQ positions if it's, if it passes. So we will need to take that into consideration if those, if either, whichever one makes it all the way through. So right now, I would say that this is probably not as competitive. And so we probably will need to take that into consideration. But we most certainly will. We probably are going to have to come back to the table once either one of those makes its way through, or, or if it makes its way through, but we do feel like it's going to happen.
And I thought I had seen, I think we talked about this, three percent each of the next two years, give or take a little bit, for SOQ-funded positions, which then we will, as we've all talked before, have to make up or supplement, so.
Anything else with regards to this slide? All right. I will press on to the next one. All right, and Ms., we have it up. So here, I just want to highlight, highlight some of our changes here. We budgeted the cost, so that the cost of the teachers were reduced. So initially, we had a number that was about a hundred and one thousand dollars. Ms. Hoover went back and reworked, she went back and reworked that number based on the projected step increase that we're giving. So this, the new number represents, I think it's about ninety, ninety-four thousand dollars. That ninety-four thousand dollars for, for a teacher is the average cost of that teacher with the projected step increase. Originally, we had, originally, we had proposed thirty FTEs, and so we did reduce that by, we did reduce that by nine. I think in our original, in our original presentation back on the eighteenth, if you remember, we had the two attendance specialists in that first one. You don't see that here in this present, in this budget. And that's because our plan is to use the all-in funds to cover the cost of one of those positions. And the reason why we did that is because we wanted to take into consideration that I think, I think Ms. Cooper had originally made the recommendation of like bumping the salary up. Is it, could we put that on a different pay level so that we could attract the right person? And so we collapsed those two to use the all-in funds. There's ninety thousand dollars earmarked in that grant, and we will use that to competitively look for one person to fill that position, which is, and we know we're going to work on the name of it also, the attendance specialist. In our original presentation, we had the K-Tech sped position. We have changed that to an instructional assistant position. And so I have done some work with Dr. Helz, the principal of K-Tech. Albemarle already, Albemarle sends a teacher for K-Tech. There's currently a staff member at K-Tech who does special education at ESL. So we think that we can leverage that position, and we don't have to do a duplication. We can restructure that, so we think that by adding a special education assistant in this role, that we will maintain and add another level of support there. So we're not decreasing the level of support for K-Tech Special Education for next year by adding the, by adding the instructional assistant. We did, originally, we had, originally, we had twelve FTEs for the Walker, I'm sorry, for the site-based substitutes. And we have reduced that to six, so we are not including the elementary in this version, in this version of it. We are going to do two for Walker, two for Beaufort, two for CHS. We did, we did, the, we changed the Beaufort specialist. There was a request for reading and math. We did, we made that an, an or there, and we will allow Beaufort to decide whether they're going to add another reading specialist or another math specialist to that, to address their current, their current needs. And we did do some reduction to the instructional, we did do some reduction to the instructional compliance specialist, and we do think that we have some, we can offset that because we had another group of individuals who we lessened their days, so it's a, it'll zero itself out, so that won't be an additional cost to us. We reduced the K-Tech hardware. We are still, we had in the original about doing the consultation for our elementary attendance zones. We still, we still are going to do that, we just are going to find a different source for the funds to contract a consultant to help us with that. So in total, we moved, we removed about one point one million dollars to help us balance this, and, which gives us a total ask, a net ask from the city of nine million, nine million twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that is a much larger ask than what we have been working on. So it's less than our original budget of the twelve million. And then we brought back, we had been in the work sessions, working about six million dollars. So we are now going to ask the, the city for a total of nine million dollars, and we'll see what happens. The next slide just shows in terms of our budgets, our budget change and our change from twenty-four to twenty-five, and the change is about eleven, eleven million dollars. And we have our look ahead. And most certainly, if there are any questions or clarifiers, this is the time to do it. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, thank you, can you go back to the previous slide?
To which one?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the general fund table, I see total changes of nearly seven, eight million there, and then when I look at the table above, I see eight point one one seven. Why? Should there be a difference there? Or are we just, they got messed up in Excel, okay? Okay. So we need to fix that. That's okay, okay. But more importantly, maybe for me, I see city appropriation, is this wrong too, than an ask of seven point eight six, seven eight six one versus the nine million ask that's in the slide above? So for the city appropriation, is that, this is that table I guess all off? Or would be, this is the, in that general funds table? Well, in the slide above, it's showing an ask for nine million and change. And then in this slide below, it's showing an ask for seven point eight.
Or use the, use the mic right there, that Pat has a mic, if you need your computer.
The city appropriation that you see under the general fund would not reflect the total nine million twenty-three thousand because the city appropriation is split between the general fund and the special revenue fund.
Okay, thanks, sorry for, thanks for that clarification. And then we are going to be debiting our fund balance by three million dollars?
No, 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 that is reflection of the change in our fund balance. Because we budget our fund balance in our budget. So if we want, if the school board authorizes us to use it, we already have the funds budgeted. So we had an increase in our, our fund balance from FY twenty-three, and that's what that's reflective of. Right, it's never known until we actually close the fiscal year. So we just closed fiscal year twenty-three, so that gets reflected in the next budget, which would be FY twenty-five.
Okay, so we're expecting our fund balance to increase at the start of FY twenty-four by three million dollars?
Okay, so we budgeted our fund balance at two point three million, which was what the fund balance was at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, okay? So when we close FY twenty-three, we raised the fund balance based on that change, and that gets reflected into the next budget year. We're always behind in budgeting the fund balance change.
Okay, so we're not generating a three million dollar surplus in any way?
No, no, no.
And we're not using currently for our, this projected FY twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five budget, any fund balance now?
We, we are not using any of our fund balance to balance the FY twenty-five budget. All we're doing is updating our budgetary fund balance in the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Morris? Ms. Cooper? Any questions? Ms. Dooley? You want me to come back to you?
Thank you. I don't know how many iterations of budgets you guys have worked on this cycle, and I fear that we're not done yet. So thank you for your efforts. I feel like this is, I don't know, the best of a bad situation, but something that we can stand behind going to city council, and I hope that they will be able to see the needs-based budget that we are presenting, and it's not even fully encapsulating our needs. I wanted to make a note just about compensation, asked about it earlier. That is something that I am concerned about, how we are compensating our people. I know that we had a meeting, was that just last week, when we were together last, talking specifically about health benefits. And I know when I was working my first five years in a neighboring county, five years in, I was netting less than when I started because of the passage of health insurance increases to me. So even though it looked like my pay was increasing, my take home wasn't. And so I appreciate the board's commitment to not doing that to our staff. You know, we talked a little bit about transportation collective bargaining. I'm excited for that to kick off with our own staff next year. But that's also going to have some pretty intense implications on our budget. And so I don't know that I really have a point to all of this, but just, yeah, our people and how we're compensating them. I fear that we're not doing that here, and it's not because we don't want to, but I don't know. I don't love it.
And we actually sit at the table with our teacher partners on, starting Monday, to start the groundwork for the conversations for the upcoming collective bargaining contract. So we, we also are excited about starting. for the conversations for the upcoming collective bargaining contract. So we, we also are excited about starting that work.
Ms. Richardson?
I will say that I wish that we was able to have a reading and math specialist at Buford. That really stood out for me because my son tends Buford and I wish we had the funds for that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, your comment, Ms. Dooley's comment. And again, on, on behalf of everybody listening, I think, and for those who have, have followed along in our previous work sessions, just the board, our work session with city council, that we, we charged Dr. Gurley to bring to us something that was reflective of what our students need, you know, what Charlottesville City Schools need. And, and somebody said here, are there other needs that aren't reflected in this budget? Absolutely, without a doubt. And we're not talking wants, we're talking needs. So really, really looking hard at, at what would best and would benefit, you know, our students in the classroom. And we have charged Dr. Gurley and his team to, to go back several times and to really dig into, to what we have to try and figure out how, how we can be creative. You know, our meeting with city council, I, I think was a great meeting. I think they did hear us. And, and they heard and acknowledged the presentation and asked some great questions. You know, this is different in the sense and, and I don't know that, you know, publicly they've really announced and finished their work. You know, I mean, they have a lot of work to do, a lot of work sessions that they need to do in different committees that, that they need to flush out their funds and the overall budget. You know, but we made a point that, that the schools are very, very important. And we really do lean into them and we appreciate the public support, the emails that we're getting. Advocating and acknowledging that, that again, this is what the board has identified as what we, we want. And we feel like minimally that we need for our students. So this is what we will be bringing to city council. You know, and, and again, with them not finishing their work, you know, we, we hope. Pardon me? Yeah, yeah. Once we vote, I'm sorry, we haven't really taken action on this. But what we do hope is, is that, you know, the number that they can, that they can offer Charlottesville City Schools is, is closer to, to what we're bringing here to, to, you know, before everybody today. So I want to thank you for digging in and doing that work. And as Ms. Dooley said, I know we've, we've asked you to kind of look at this several times. And this is a little bit different in, in how we're doing this, but I, I think this is the right thing to do. So any other questions? I guess we need a motion. This is an action item. And unless there's anything else that board members would like to say.
I move to approve the budget. Second.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? I think I'm going to ask for a, a voice vote on this, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Julie?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Torres?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gurley.
Thank you.
So we do have another opportunity for comment from the, the community, members of the community, if anybody would like to say anything. All right, any other board comments?
Yeah, I'd just like colleagues and these members of public, right, I do think this is a needs budget and there are more things I'd like to see in there. I think the budget process, and we talked about this in some of our other meetings, does need to be revised. I think not only internally, but how we interact with council and, and have our meeting scheduled with council, etc., the timing of all those things. And I, I would hope Chair, maybe you explore with the mayor or, you know, some kind of committee, joint committee that can review this so that we can have a much better process at, at next year. Would be my suggestion. I don't know if my colleagues would be open to that or not, but, or we need to take an action on it, but I, I don't think this has been the best process and not, again, criticizing staff in any way, but it's just kind of how it is and I think we can do better. Thanks.
All right, Dr. Gurley, do you have any closing comments? Okay. Just real quickly, upcoming meetings, we do have our meeting Tuesday, March fifth with city council. And that will be at city hall. And that I believe is at six thirty. And then on March seventh, we will have our next regularly scheduled school board meeting here in the media center at five o'clock. And so with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.